Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the town board meeting of Tuesday, November 12. The board has been in executive session and I would like to ask for motion to open the work session.
Sure.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I wanna start off by announcing that the Chapakaw Fire Department is having a holiday food drive for the Interfaith Pantry. It's going to be from November 13 through December 15 and there will be bins for donations at Town Hall near the police station, at the firehouse on Pig Creek, the small firehouse at Center Street and at Horace Greeley High School. I'm not exactly sure where but that's for the students to come in and make their donations. They're asking for low sugar cereal, pancake mix, coffee and tea, non-dairy milk, crackers, oil, chicken or vegetable broth, socks, gently used half stars and gloves. So it's a great project and we're glad that they're doing it, so just wanna alert everyone to that. Also, I wanna let everyone know that there is that second mailing of the Invision Newcastle survey that should be in your mailboxes definitely by the end of this week. It's the identical survey that was sent the first time. We're doing a new, a second mailing because the first mailing arrived a little later than we expected so we really want everyone to have a chance to participate. So you will get one paper survey for your household but you can use the access code to take the survey online. So people in the same household can take the survey. You know, if there are multiple adults in the household, you can take the same, the survey using your individual household access code online. So I encourage you to do that and we're looking forward to the results of the survey. Let's see, Jill, are there any other announcements that we need to make? Okay, so we'll start the work session. I want to remind everyone that the town of Newcastle did institute a burn ban effective, which was effective Friday, November 8, which was effective up until today because we were waiting for the board meeting so that the board could ratify that burn ban and extend it. But in the meantime, as of today, Governor Hochul issued a statewide burn ban through November 30. So I would like to ask the board to approve the Newcastle burn ban, to extend the Newcastle burn ban through the same date as the governor indicated, November 30. And of course, we'll keep monitoring the conditions. But the entire Lower Hudson Valley is on a red alert. So I would really emphasize that everyone, please take this very seriously. People, some people hadn't heard about the burn ban, so please tell your friends and neighbors. This has been the dry stop October on record. The governor was up in Orange County at Greenwood Lake. It was, you know, very difficult situations up there. There is a Jennings Creek and Sterling State Park fire and there are little brush fires, you know, sometimes erupting here or there. So we ask that you be alert and if you see anything, the fire departments have asked that you notify them immediately. And of course, we are in a, you know, in a drought situation, so there is, you know, voluntary limiting of water consumption, so please do that and stay alert. We will put out a NICSIL, an e-alert regarding the burn ban. We will put up an alert at the electronic sign at the Bell School property and, you know, like I said, please, please let your friends and neighbors know. Okay, so we'll have a resolution on extending burn ban later tonight. Okay, and now, any comments? Okay. So now we'll move to our next topic. The first topic on the agenda, proposed moratorium on battery energy storage systems and commercial solar arrays. So Sabrina, would you like to start that discussion?
Sure, I'm happy to start. Lino and-
Sabrina, just to let you know, Tom's here.
I see Tom. I see Tom.
And more Tom. Yeah, sorry, either one of you.
We can both do it if you want.
You decide.
Please start.
I'll chime in.
Okay, so the, we're taking a proactive stance on large-scale solar and separately battery energy storage systems. So we wanted to make sure that we had enough time to really dive in and understand how we can regulate, what we should regulate and make sure we cover all the bases, which is why we're requesting the moratorium. Tom, do you wanna add anything to that?
Sure, I would love to. We have been monitoring what other neighbors have done and what are doing currently and seeing some of the trials and tribulations they're going through. These systems, once implemented, are usually for 25 years. So it's hard to turn back once you've put something in play. So we just, we'd be asking to have the time to accurately establish some criteria, do our due diligence to make sure we're benefiting the town, maybe form a committee if the board so chose to evaluate more of this and to just give a six-month pause to go through this.
Yeah, well, I, I know that there's been a big push to do this because we have a New York State 70% carbon neutrality goal, but there, these are highly, you know, dangerous battery storage systems and so we just wanna make sure that we have all the protections in place and that we have all the information we need to make these decisions. They're highly flammable and there are impacts on surrounding properties in, in many respects. So I think this is a good move. I think it's proactive. And in terms of getting committees together, I know that we have our Sustainability Advisory Board, so we need to reach out to them to get their feedback.
Mm-hmm.
That is, I guess, the committee that we have in place. But there may be other factors in, in these battery energy systems that need to be looked at. So beyond what the SAB would look at, what, what other factors would you think we need to study?
There is the fire safety aspects in conjunction with the environmental impacts.
Right, so do you think the, you know, the fire, fire marshals?
The fire safety should, should be, we should include the fire chiefs, fire districts
Yeah.
to weigh in on this because they will be the ones responding in the event of a, an incident. So I think-
We, we would, we would also like to do a little more investigation as to the value of trees. In our, in our area, we're looking at keeping out of wetlands and steep slopes which are prone to the areas where the battery energy storage would be primed to locate because of our existing environmental regulations. But one area that is not really well-supported is the removal of trees. So we wanna do some due diligence to make sure that we have enough information to understand the impacts of clearcutting for these entities.
And I think we'd also wanna have this go by the Conservation Board.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
At least if there's a committee representative from the Conservation Board.
Yeah, I, I think the intention is to work on developing a draft based on what our neighbors have learned and kind of what we feel is the best, the best out there. And then we can run the draft by the various committees to make sure that they're comfortable with it or maybe enhance it further. So, you know, I think our first step is to come together with a draft that we feel is strong enough and addresses many of our issues, if not all.
It seems to me the moratorium is a good way to make sure that we can get ahead of it before it gets ahead of us.
Correct.
Thank you.
Right, that, that's definitely why we're doing that and we don't have any proposals before us. So we're not, you know, stepping into anyone's project. This is a good way to do it.
Yeah, and I'll work with, with Tom and Sabrina on draft the moratorium, which again, my firm has done other moratoriums with respect to this issue, so we'll look at it and then, but in terms of actually doing a local law to address both the solar and battery, that's something we'll work with the other agencies in coming up with a local law that will work with Newcastle. At least the moratorium with six months is, is what other neighboring communities have done and it's worked.
Have any of them extended the six, the six-month moratorium?
Yes, yeah.
I think this is really important. I'm glad we're taking it on. I've been paying attention to what our local neighbors have been doing, you know, Kisco, Carmel, for example. And aside from the concerns regarding safety, fire hazards, I'm concerned about contamination. I'm concerned about what happens in the case of an emergency. I'm concerned about our residents. Where would we even consider putting one of these if we were to put one? So I'm in full favor of a moratorium and possibly extending beyond that. So I'm glad we're taking this, the time to, to look into this. It's important.
Yeah, I'm concerned as well that by trying to address environmental issues on the one hand, that we not go and create even greater problems in
That's right.
you know, some of the solutions that people have, have considered. So I think this is a good timing. And what, how long do you think? I don't wanna rush. I think we should do this well rather than do it quickly. But what do you think your estimated timing would be in terms of a first draft that we would then send to the other agencies and committees to take a look at?
Yeah, I don't wanna put a, okay, time because I really wanna get the moratorium in place first and once I get the moratorium in place, then I could probably better ask that because again, I'm, I'm taking a look at, again, you gotta look at the geography of Newcastle because generally these battery, battery systems go near substations. So I need to look at that, look at the area where, where it might work, where, where it could work or may not. So those are the kind of things we have to look at internally before we provide a local law because that will all be in the local law terms of location, where it's gonna be zoned. So I don't wanna put in an arbit, like an artificial time date, but let's, let's just look at it first because if there are sample local laws around the county that they've done it, but it may not work for Newcastle. Maybe we take a piece from one, a piece from the other and look at, you know, our zoning district to see where it could work if at all. So that's something to look at.
So when, when could we expect to see a draft of the moratorium?
Moratorium I can have drafted so that I'll be ready to go for your, your next meeting is by the 19th.
Tuesday.
Next, so do you wanna put that in for December?
I would, we could do the moratorium for, I would, because we have to get it out for GML, alright Sabrina?
Correct.
So it's like a day.
Yeah, so you need 30 days there. I mean, it's a type 2 action, it's a secret, so you don't have to do that, but we do have to get it out for GML.
It has to be referred to the planning board?
Yep. Yep, so you, I would probably look at it maybe January, probably is better to do this, give, give yourself some time. So you, you need to send out the notice. You have to refer it to the planning board and-
And Westchester County.
Yeah.
So if we notice the moratorium next week?
Well, we don't need to notice it at a meeting, do we?
Not just, no you don't, but we do need to do, you, I need, you need a copy of the moratorium in hand.
Right.
So, which I can draft.
You need the draft.
Need the draft and then, once we're okay with the draft, then Sabrina can send it out for a GML review and send it off to the planning board for review. And we're gonna need at least 30 days for that, right?
Correct.
For the, yeah, so if I can get that law to you by next, next Tuesday, take a look at it, if you're okay with it internally, then we can send it out. And again, you're still looking at probably January, early January for a public hearing.
Yeah.
That's right.
Okay.
The wheels move slowly, but
Well, she has a holiday.
That's the way it goes.
We're in the middle of November. It's actually not that far off.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, this is, this is true. You got Thanksgiving in a couple of weeks and then holidays,
Right.
but it's the 30, it's the GML that you can't really get out from. You have to do that.
Okay.
And also, there's also whether do we do one moratorium, like one local law as opposed to two? Because again, the, the moratorium that I have, they have one separate for solar, one separate for battery, but maybe I could combine the two and do it all in one. So that's something I have to look at.
Okay. Have you, you haven't done both, okay.
The ones that I have are either for battery, solar, you know, they're, they're not combined. So they're separate moratoriums for each type of use. So I'm not saying I have to do it that way. We could probably combine it.
I would prefer to, I prefer, I would prefer to do it separately because they're gonna each have their own issues, yes.
Do they separately? Okay, then we'll keep it separate. See, that's easy enough.
Yeah, no, we need to keep it separate even though there is some overlap when you do have solar systems. You 99.9% have a battery energy storage system.
Okay.
So we have to really look at how we wanna lay that out, but I, I'm leaning towards separating
Separate, okay.
because solar is locationally different.
Right.
Just explain what GML requirements are to the group.
So generally it's the law, 239M, when you're doing the local zoning law, which, which is a moratorium, right?
We all knew that, we're just checking.
It has to go to the county for a referral, so the county will either say it's a matter for local determination, no issues, or it is, it does impact county, but you have to send it to the county for a GML, general municipal law, 239M review.
And you're, and, and typically, does GML or is it town code that says it goes to the planning board?
That's, that's town code.
So. So I, I typically handle the planning board and the town clerk, Christina, will do the circulation to the county.
Finally, one of the machines here.
Yes. Can you pass your twice?
Thank you.
We were just checking.
It was easy, it's awful.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you Tom.
My pleasure.
So appreciate it.
See you tomorrow.
Okay. Um, okay, so there is one more thing that Sabrina was gonna talk to us about, so I'm just gonna take and pull it out, Sabrina, we're-
You wanna jump to the RFP?
Yes, please.
So we received monies from NYSERTA to put solar, a solar installation on the Chapka Performing Arts Center. In order to do that, we must issue an RFP due to the expense that we will incur. It's about $130,000 that we have estimated to do that work. We, we have created a request for proposals that we'll put up on BidNet and circulate to certain vendors that we know have been watching and we need your authorization to post that RFP.
Okay, so that's on our consent agenda?
Yes, it is.
Yeah?
That's a centimation, sure, since we had the luxury of having Sabrina join us for this.
Yes.
So it's important, any questions?
No, I mean, we're happy to have the opportunity for, for solar somewhere in our town facilities that does not require elimination of trees. It's also an opportunity.
Sabrina, I, I assume that there's some level of involvement from the SAB when it comes to the solar? Or maybe reviewing the bids or something?
They typically don't review the bids when we have a preferred vendor and they have a plan. I've, I've agreed to let them see the plan.
Okay.
You know, it's still in its infancy. I don't think it's appropriate for the SAB to get involved at this stage because this is really paperwork and having the town select an appropriate qualified vendor in accordance with the state requirements.
Okay.
But at the time that, that a, that a plan for that solar installation is provided, I have actually spoken with Kent Thomas and said I would share it with him.
Okay, perfect. I just wanna know where the points of interaction would be. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I will share it with him. Okay?
Yeah, any other questions or something? Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you Sabrina.
Bye.
Okay.
Okay, go to honorary street meeting?
Right, so the board earlier this year took in, instituted a honorary street meeting program for our town. This is going to be the first test under that program. I have submitted a letter to myself, actually. As he turns out. It was a surprise, but I got it. Supporting, outlining Mr. Lang's roots in the community and supporting the the institution, I guess, of Mr. Lang's way for our first honorary street sign. What the, according to our new regulation, what's going to happen is, is that the board's going to accept my request and refer to Ray Williams, who is our town historian, who will then have 45 days to make a finding to see whether or not I've been truthful in my assessment that Mr. Lang had an, had just an amazingly wonderful way of acting and has great roots in the community and we want this entirely.
We definitely will. Mr. Lang was such a beloved person in this community and he did so much for everyone in so many ways that I'm really, really, I think this is the least we could do. It's very bittersweet, but I'm very glad that we can do it. And Jill, just to match the awkwardness of your getting a letter to yourself, you, you're going to be requesting us to do something that I requested. So, but all that is to say that this is something that means a lot to all of us and that we want to see happen. And, you know, the, the families aware and we, I did discuss the name of the street with them and I, and everyone feels that Mr. Lang's is the, the right name for, because everyone knew him as Mr. Lang.
Mm-hmm.
So we're really thrilled to start the, the process for getting that done.
Right, so I will let, if, if the board approves this this evening, I will let Gray Williams know that,
Yes.
Mr. Williams know that he should be receiving a resolution and a referral and when we get it back from him within 45 days, we will take and set it down for a public hearing.
Okay.
So coming down by-
Great, very good. So now we can get to all the other administrative items.
Yes, we've got quite the long list, actually. Okay, we've already addressed a number of them. The burning ban extension and the holiday food drive sponsored by the Chapakaw Fire Department. We've got two different sets of retroactive payment claims, one for checks dated October 23, 2024, and one for checks dated November 6, 2024. The next item is going to be authorization to set the public hearing on the 2025 budget. That's gonna be for December 3, 2024. Copies of the preliminary budget.
They'll be online tomorrow morning and in the clerk's office tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Yeah, and thank you Rob for
Yeah, thank you.
great budget work again, once again.
Next is authorization to set a public hearing on the eminent domain proceedings. As the board is aware, a woman tortures history of the Joan Corwin Way property and we've set that down for December 12.
That's Thursday?
The 12th is a-
Thursday.
Oh, well then that's all right. It's December 10.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Next is authorization to, to approve the banner request, Community Day, September 14, 2025.
It's the 13th.
Say again?
It's the 13th.
It's the 13th.
Who was, was someone looking at the?
Wrong calendar.
Yeah, obviously. Wait, let's just, um,
Good job Holly.
make sure we fix the consent agenda.
For freedom of heart.
Lauren, can you just check those, double check that on that?
Yeah, okay.
The number, town for that, and
Yeah, my fault, fine.
Sorry, community, what was it, community day is the 13th?
It's okay.
The 13th.
Is the 13th.
13th, the Saturday.
Holly, how'd you do that? Do you have a calendar in your head?
My son's birthday is September 13.
Mine's on the 4th, my daughter's on 4th. So I think-
Okay. And you knew, I think?
Okay, the next is we've got authorization to approve the 2025 Partners in Safety Service Agreement. So Partners in Safety does drug and alcohol testing for both pre-employment and factoring and random testing for anyone who drives a town car. We've already spoken about the authorization to solicit bids for the procurement and installation of the solar at Chapak. The next is an authorization to approve, this is Newcastle United 3U expenditure. These expenditures, although they come through the town board, that's just pro forma. They have their own funding source and the expenditures come out of those directly. The next is authorization to retain annual service agreement for the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. This is for onsite calibration and factory, factory recommended maintenance. Not gonna comment on that at all. Next is authorization to approve the service order for light path. We are finally getting new phones, a new phone system. Our phone system is no longer supported. We are the last of
Three, I think.
Three, yeah, that still has this old, yeah, that has this old phone system. Yeah. So it's, it's time, so bear with us, but many thanks to Rob for taking a spearheading this and finally getting it done.
And it's Walter, sorry. I, I can take credit for reviewing the financial proposal, but Walter's done all the legwork for sure.
Yeah, he's what a fabulous guy. We, we are so lucky with him. He's unbelievable. Next is authorization to solicit bids for the proposed 120 Quaker Street pedestrian bridge replacement project. This is the pedestrian bridge that goes alongside of the Duck Pond and also, I guess it would be for the Duck Pond Bridge?
Sure.
Yeah, both of them. Them were done as-
One of those is a storm one, right?
They actually were both, they were a storm.
They're both storms.
And so this is a FEMA, the pedestrian bridge is a FEMA project. Also, as a FEMA project is the authorization to solicit bids for the proposed slope stabilization and stormwater improvements for 140 Shaler Road. That's another FEMA project. And the next is authorization to solicit bids for wastewater transfer pump at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant. Also to purchase a tankless hot water heater at the Chapak. That's so that we can institute gas service in the building. Let's see, we've got an authorization to solicit proposals of engineering services for petroleum bulk storage improvements at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant for heating oil tanks. These are the last of the buried oil tanks that we're hoping to get rid of and have them up ground. We also have engineering services for the cleaning and cement lining of water mains. That's gonna be the next project for next year that Spott's already putting into motion. Next is, actually this isn't right, right? So it's actually not to rebid the, oh, it is, I'm sorry. This is authorization to rebid the 2025 coach bus services for recreation in parks. So we went out to bid for coach bus services for companies that had three buses that would allow us at least three.
Minus three, right.
Yeah, for, for companies so we could expand our camp offerings and ski trips and things like that. And there aren't that many companies that have three buses.
Oh.
So we're back to the joint board and reissuing or-
Good respect, but
Yeah.
Going to two buses.
For two buses, yeah.
For that day, for those days.
Right. Right.
So yeah, that was, that was a lesson learned for us. Yeah, so that concludes the administrative items. Anyone have, yeah? Questions?
I just wanna see how remarkable it is that, you know, we have great water in this town and that's the result of doing a lot of work on the water treatment plant. It's really very impressive. It's important. Just wanna note that we, we do that. It's a lot of, of investment in clean water, in clean drinking water.
We do an excellent work.
Yeah. Okay, so that, I guess that takes us to our resolutions. Right, we have, let's see, the administrative items. Let's see, Jill, do you wanna go through the proposed actions here or?
Um, no, why don't we go through the consent agenda and then we'll go through the, the other ones that you, yeah. So do, do you wanna start with the consent agenda and then we'll do the, you want the proposed action first?
Um, no, no, no. Do you wanna go through the items on the consent agenda? I mean, we're not ready for the resolutions yet, right?
Yeah, no, we are.
I figured we-
So the, we just went through the administrative items and they are in fact the consent agenda items.
There's two DMs over the middle of the week, especially.
Right, so we've got authorization to approve the PFK Okana-Davey's audit engagement. This is a renewal through 2026 of auditing services for the town. And last is authorization to settle the 2019, 2021 and 2023 tax sorority proceedings. Can't believe Josh didn't get me the pronunciation. Diana?
Advisor Card 3.
Thank you, works for me, Realty LLC. Right, also
No, Jill, you should go over the proposed actions and then when we do, we'll do the, all the resolutions including consent agenda and adjourn.
Okay.
We'll do it that way.
So, um-
Because we're gonna vote on the proposed.
Yes, we have a retroactive payment of claims for checks dated October 23rd. The next proposed action is retroactive payment of claims for checks dated November 6. We have authorization to hire a recreation attendant. We have authorization to hire a laborer in recreation parks. Unfortunately, we have an authorization to accept probationary failure. And we have an authorization to promote in DPW. That's Julia Holden. Very pleased to be able to, to extend promotion to her. Next is authorization to approve a waiver of a tax penalty. Unfortunately, the other resident who passed away and their state was unable to access the funds in order to pay the taxes. And uh last but not least, our authorization to approve the honorary street naming application and referral to our uh town historian, Mr. Lang's way.
All right, thank you.
And are we gonna do the burn ban?
Yes.
We are going, yeah, we discussed. We discussed the burn ban and we're going to do it with the resolutions.
Yeah.
Um
Yeah.
Um are you ready to, Mark, Holly, do you wanna start with the? Resolutions?
Um I moved to adopt the items one through seventeen listed on the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Hi. I moved to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of one million three hundred seventy-one thousand two hundred fourteen dollars and sixty-nine cents listed on the summary A P check register and detailed voucher detail reports dated October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Thursday, October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second. All in favor?
Hi. Thank you, Rob.
Um, can do one more?
I moved to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of one million five hundred twenty-six thousand twenty-four dollars and fifty-nine cents listed on the summary A P checking register and detailed voucher detail reports dated November sixth, twenty-twenty-four. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, November sixth, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi. I moved to authorize the hiring of Freddie Suquy for the position of P T A recreation attendant to work at the community center at the hourly rate of thirty dollars per hour effective November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second, all in favor?
Hi. I moved to authorize the hiring of Alejandro Petrosino for the position of laborer within the Recreation and Parks Department at the annual salary of fifty-one thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents effective December ninth, twenty-twenty-four.
Second, all in favor?
Um.
Do you want me to read this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
I moved to authorize the promotion of Julia Golden from the position of secretary to the commissioner of public works to assistant to the commissioner of public works at the annual salary of one hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred dollars effective November eleventh, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, Rob.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Um, Jill, go ahead.
I moved to accept the probation failure termination of employee number three zero eight six laborer within the Department of Public Works effective November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, close of business.
We need.
Hawks was two weeks ago.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
So we change even the.
No, no, we're good.
No.
Oh.
Um you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I moved to authorize the waiver of penalties from the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school taxes for S B L eight-two-five-one-six in the amount of seventy-nine dollars sixty-two cents and S B L eight-two-five-one-five in the amount of a hundred and twenty-four dollars thirty-seven cents for the total amount of two hundred and three dollars ninety-nine cents with our condolences to the family.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I moved to authorize and acknowledge the letter application and letter of support of the honorary street naming in memory of Mr. Richard Lang. The letter application has been deemed to be complete and the town board now acknowledges the request and refers this request to the town historian Gray Williams for his review and recommendation, in which there should be expected finding within forty-five days.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have two more. We have the tax cert, did we, did we do the tax?
We did it.
It was in here, we didn't need to do, right. We have the burn ban. Do you wanna continue with the burn ban, except that um I'd like to say that that is through November through twenty-twenty-four, because we don't have an end date.
Ah, okay. Um now therefore be it resolved that the supervisor of the town of Newcastle has hereby declared and extends the current state of emergency burn ban for the town of Newcastle.
Through
Through November three.
through November thirty.
November, through November.
Through November thirtieth.
Twenty-twenty-four.
Does it need an actual time or is it just a little?
You can do it for the whole day.
Midnight.
Eleven, eleven fifty-nine, yeah.
It would, it wouldn't fly that it's, you know, through through nine, through eleven fifty-nine, I suppose.
Yeah. Right.
We don't have to state a time, I don't think.
No.
Because it's all day.
It's all day, right.
It's all day through the end of the day.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Mia have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.